It's seven o'clock, so I'll call the Board of Supervisors and Public Hearing Board.
And I'll call, call to order the Planning Commission portion of the joint public hearing as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors. At this point, I'd like to read the advertisement that was placed in the Smith County News for tonight's public hearing. Before the Smith County Board of Supervisors and Smith County Planning Commission, the Smith County Board of Supervisors and the Smith County Planning Commission will conduct a joint public hearing on Thursday, March 25th, 2021, at 7:00 PM or soon after 7:00 PM, as the application may be heard, in the Smith County Office Building, 121 Bagley Circle, Marion, Virginia, to consider the following applications to the zoning ordinance of Smith County, Virginia. An application from Gregory Gordon for a special use permit for a restaurant. The property is located beside 902 Allison Gap Road, Salvo, Virginia, identified as tax mountain number 28A3-4-1, and zoned agriculture rural. An application from David Peak for a special use permit for two multifamily dwelling units. The property is located beside 210 Walton Road, Marion, Virginia, identified as tax mountain numbers 46B-3-63, 46B-3-64, 46B-3-65, 43B-3-66, 46B-3-67, 46B-3-68, 46B-3-69, 46B-3-70, and all of those tracks are zone residential. At this public hearing, subject to the rules of procedure of the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission of Smith County, Virginia, any person may appear and state his or her views thereon. Copies of the applications, along with their maps and drawings, are on file in the office of the County Administrator of Smith County. Copies are also maintained by the county's own administrator through address given above and may be viewed during regular business hours, Monday through Friday. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this hearing should contact Clay Williams, ADA Coordinator, at 276-706-8315, at least 48 hours prior to the hearing, done by the order of the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission, Sean Ut, County Administrator, and Joel Pugh, Chairman of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'd like to point out, in case someone's noticing, we do have people in the adjoining room that are also watching and participating. And when we get to the second part, I believe, they will be coming into this room to make some comments. But that's why you're seeing on the screen there, in case anybody's wondering. We'll have the reading of the rules of public hearing.
I'll entertain a motion to waive those rules.
Overruled, Mr. Chairman.
All right, have a second? Have a motion to second. Any discussion? We'll have to have a voice to vote on that. You want to do it, Lisa?
Sure. Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
All right, so we've waived unanimously, we waived the rules to the meeting. Now we have consideration of the special use permits.
Okay, thank you. So the first application we have tonight comes to us from Mr. Gregory Gordon. He owns an undressed structure which is located between 902 and 920 Allison Gap Road in Salvo. He is interested in establishing a pizza restaurant and has applied for a special use permit. Notice that this public hearing is advertised in the Smith County News on March 13th and 20th. In addition, notification of this hearing was sent to each of his adjoining property owners by first-class mailing. I didn't receive any comments regarding this application, and while considering his application, I'd like to highlight the following sections of the ordinance. 3-2.2B, which allows restaurants in the AR District by issuance of a special use permit, and Article 6, which contains the provisions for special use permit. I'd also like to point out that the conference plan identifies this property as rural residential on a future land use map. And that's all I have in regards to this application. Mr. Gordon is here tonight, and I'd like to invite him up to the podium to present his proposal. Thank you.
Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gregory Ralph Gordon. I live at 145 Pump Log Hollow Road, Saltville, Virginia. Lived there all my life. I actually own 902 adjacent property to that, so this joins that property. And I own the property behind it, which I'm not sure of the tax map number, but there's one adjacent property to it that is owned by Brandon Neese. But the way I came about with this idea was, I bought this property about a year and a half ago, and it has this structure on there. And back fall of the year, my son approached me and he said, "You know what you ought to do, Dad?" I said, "What?" He said, "Why don't you open a pizza restaurant?" He said, "No, I'll run it for you." That kind of got my attention, but... So anyway, I gave it some thought and it seemed like a pretty good idea. I mean, I want to try to better the community of the town of Salvo. Of course, it sits outside the town just a little bit, but give folks another option for restaurants. And I want to do takeout and delivery only. Number one, based on the size, it's a two-story building and there's not enough room for Eden situation, and I don't want to have to really deal with that anyway. So we would do, if it gets approved, takeout and delivery service. Of pizzas, subs, and wings. And I reached out to Clay and to Sarah Paris on how I need to start this procedure. They said, "Well, you need to apply, get a permit, do this," and that's how I got to be here today. So I got the ball rolling, and here I am.
All right. We do not have anyone that signed up that wishes to speak. Does anyone here wish to speak on this particular?
I would.
Okay.
I've been by Mr. Gordon's place. He's got it cleaned up real nice, painted up, it's in a good place. He's right, there's not any parking there. But takeout is a thing in the future anyway, because pizza's 99% is delivery or takeout. I talked to several people in the community and rounded up in Pump Log where he was raised, and everybody is looking forward to it and hopes that he has big success with it.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you, and be careful.
All right, if you could give me just a minute, I'm going to shuffle some people around, and we'll get to the second application.
Chris, in case you're wondering, because I think your phone was disconnected for a minute there, we're bringing some more people in who want to comment on the next one, so that's what we're waiting on.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's fine. I understand. You all began to see the visual by using my phone.
Okay. That's way above my pay grade, sorry.
It's a lot easier to watch these online than it is to listen all the time.
Okay, we ready?
We're ready. You go on.
All right, so the second application we have tonight comes to us from Mr. David Peak. He owns several lots on Walton Road in the Greenpoint subdivision, and he would like to construct two apartment buildings on those tracks, and he has applied for a special use permit. Like the previous application, notice that this application was published in the Smith County News on March 13th and 20th, and a first-class letter was sent to each of his adjoining property owners. I did receive one letter in regards to this application, and she asked that I present it to you here tonight, and so I'd like to read that now. It's dated March 24th, 2021. It's addressed to the Smith County Planning Commission, Marion, Virginia, 24354. "Mr. Williams and Planning Commission and Board members, my family's lived on this street, in this home, for about 64 years. I understand that Mr. Peak is interested in now building apartments on the adjoining lot behind me. When we moved into this home many years ago, we were wide open and exposed on all sides of our property. However, at that time, there was only open field behind us. That entire community has been added since we moved to this address. Over the past 64 years, we have managed to have a boundary of trees, brush, and vines that provides wonderful privacy from our neighbors on the back side. There is a 10 to 20-foot right-of-way that separates our property. My concern is that Mr. Peak not encroach into this right-of-way and remove this privacy source. It has taken a lifetime to develop. He has assured me that he will not. However, sometimes conversations seem to fade from memory. I would simply ask that there be some stipulation, if the permit is granted, that Mr. Peak certainly not start clearing and cutting until and unless he and I, or my family that may occupy this property after my departure from this earth, discuss what he might intend to remove. I certainly do not wish to put anyone in harm's way because of trees, but I believe it's necessary to have some language regarding this matter in the event a permit is granted. I'm sorry I am unable to attend the meeting, but do appreciate the Board's consideration in this matter. Thank you so much, and that is signed, Sharon, the Board, 117 Hockett Street." And I thought it may help everyone to see the right-of-way that she is describing, because I read it, I was looking for clarification. And basically, she lives in an adjoining subdivision, and what I imagine happened many, many years ago is that the two owners of those developments didn't like one another. And so there was what I call a 10-foot spite strip put between the two developments. And you'll see that on the plat that I'm about to hand out. And essentially, that's reserved property, it's no man's land, and that's what she's referring to in her letter.
Who pays the tax on it?
Nobody. Can y'all? So she lives up here, and lots are talking about, there's the 10-foot reserved area.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What she's asking on the special use permit, is that even possible with the fact that it's not on his piece of land and not on hers?
Well, in my opinion, I mean, I think she's effectively asking that if you're inclined to approve the special use permit, that you place a condition that he not disturb the reserved strip. In my opinion, he doesn't under reserve strip. He doesn't have the legal right to do it anyway. But that's effectively what she's asking for.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sorry, if the... Who owns the street?
Nobody.
How do you do that? So there's no recording deed nor a...
No. It quite literally is no man's land. Well, let me rephrase that, and Scott may want to jump in here. Whoever owned that land when the subdivision was developed still technically owns it.
Yeah, there's got to be a boundary line somewhere.
Yes, yes. But when they recorded, yeah, when they recorded that plat and they reserved that strip of land, they technically retained that. But through the years, it's fallen through the cracks. There is no tax map number associated with it, and therefore, there's nobody that is paying taxes on it.
Will you go over it for me one more time exactly where this was located?
Sure. Go through downtown Marion, hang a left like you're going to the town pool.
Okay.
All right, get to the top of the hill, and there's what I call Old Minute Mark Number Two on the left.
Yeah.
All right, this subdivision is all behind that. So right behind Ferry Ground Hill.
Not far from where we, not long ago, had someone in here where the two trailers was, and wanted to rezone down there. Down over the hill, you know what we were talking about, Richard Sims', the Richard Sims property?
It's down from there.
Yeah.
So it's down a little bit from there?
Right.
On the same road?
This is on the next, the next down there from the hill. So the trailers will be up here, past Hockett Street, and this is a whole nother subdivision.
Up on the right?
It would be down on the left.
Okay.
Or I'm down the right, I'm sorry.
I was just trying to get my burns, yeah. Thanks.
All right, we good? All right, so in addition to Ms. DeBoer's letter, I also received correspondence from VDOT. Mr. Peak actually saw or applied for a commercial entrance permit, and VDOT did approve that and sent me a copy of that. While considering his application, I would like to highlight Section 3-3.2, which allows multifamily dwellings in the residential district by issuance of a special use permit, and Article 6, which contains the provisions for special use permits. I'd also like to note that the conference plan identifies this property as rural residential on a future land use map. And that's all I have for this application. Mr. Peak is with us tonight. I'd like to ask him to come up and present his proposal to you all.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Peak. I live at 600 Leslie Street in Marion. I propose to build these units primarily, I'm interested in supplying some needs that have become available through the school. As Paul Schefter knows, I built some apartments in front of the place he recently had, and I've had several calls from students from out of town wanting to rent. Of course, my place is rented right now, and I thought this is a great opportunity to pursue this. I built a house on 210 Walton Road in 1990, it's about 30 years ago. And I built it to sell, but it didn't sell, so I let my mom and dad move in. I sold it to them at no profit. The first thing my dad did was plant 60 trees up beside the property to hopefully they would grow up to where he wouldn't see the mess on the other side where these 10 trailers were. Dad lived there for 20 years, and then he passed away. Mom lived there another four. Claude Heath and Tim Bradley bought that property, and Claude said he was going to do one of three things. Build a house for him to live in with his brother, sister-in-law, he needed more room. The second option he had, he was going to build a duplex. The third option, he said, "I may sell it." And I asked him, "If you sell it, can I have the first chance?" And he said, "Yes." Well, a few years went by, and he asked me to help him tear down the trailers, said he'd give me half of the scrap money, which wasn't very much money at that time. After we tore the first two trailers down, he said, "I could tear the rest of them down and have everything." But with there not being much money in debt, I hired somebody to help me tear the trailers down. I understand that that was a problem with the the you people here, that people kept calling in complaining about that property. There was eight trailers on it that were condemned. The previous owner lived in one trailer, which was a sham. And after he passed away, a year later, Claude Heath bought the lot. When he decided to sell it to me, I told him that I would buy it, but I was going to clean it off first, which I did. And then I bought the property, and for two years, I've been thinking what to do with that. And I thought with so many calls that I've had for my duplex, that I would build something to cater to the Emory students. And that's it.
Okay.
That's why I'm here.
All right, thank you. We have three people that signed up to speak on this. So Brian Vernon?
Yes, sir.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Brian Vernon, 213 Walton Road, right across the street from the address that Mr. Peak is wanting to build on. I want to thank you guys for allowing me to speak tonight and listening to me. I've got some bullet points that just taken from the website, the Smith County website. I just printed it off, and bullet points are what the Planning Commission takes into account in deciding a special permit. There are like 11 bullet points, but I'm just going to focus on three. This has been a quiet residential area for over 50 years. All lots are zoned residential. The subdivision wasn't designed for a business. Eight condos, apartments, is, in my opinion, the definition of a business. This belongs in a business district or zone. Potential, if there are eight apartments, there's a potential for 16 new cars coming in and out. That's up to a potentially 50% increase in traffic just on that road. It sits on the top of a blind hill. And, you know, I'm wondering, is that protecting the safety of the kids that play around that area? There's, and if it exactly is eight-bedroom apartments, who are we attracting there? I know that we're attracting, he's looking to attract students, but that's not always going to be the case. If someone shows up with the deposit, I believe it's illegal not to rent to that person, just because they're not a student. So who are we attracting? If not students, it's definitely not families, and it's not other kids with one-bedroom apartments. As for protection of privacy, there'll be dusted dawn lights. There'll be, like I said, potentially 16 cars headlights coming in and out, shining right through our living room. Safety of the kids, I have three young kids. There's up to 12 to 14 kids in that neighborhood that play right around that area. Is this protecting their safety with the traffic, the additional traffic that's coming in and out? And several of you guys have, and ladies, have driven by to get your view of it yourselves, and I commend that. I would just ask you to think about if this was your neighborhood, would you want that in your neighborhood? Thank you.
Kathy Fowler. Kathy Fowler signed up to speak.
Kathy Fowler, 217 Walton Road, Marion. Myself and my husband were an older couple there in that neighborhood. My husband's sick. It's always been a very nice, quiet, friendly, family-oriented neighborhood. We've lived there for the past eight years and intend it to be our forever home. We're concerned about the increase in the traffic, the noise level, especially with the college kids, they like to party, and the safety of the neighborhood. We don't have any small children ourselves, but we love our neighbors' children as if they were our own, and we're concerned for their safety also. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Brooke Vernon, please.
Good evening. My name's Brooke Vernon, and I live at 213 Walton Road. My husband just spoke, and I'm pretty much going to reiterate what he said. You know, my biggest concern is that there is going to be an increase in the traffic in our neighborhood. My children have been there since we moved back in 2011. This is right across from our house. There is definitely going to be a lot of traffic. And when you have children, our neighbors came in support of us in what we feel, because they also have children there that ride their bikes up and down the street. And we have children that are constantly walking the block. So, you know, with this increase, if there isn't a decrease in the speed limit, that's, you know, a concern of mine. The shining of lights, the dusted dawn lights for our privacy. And then property value, there's no way to know if this is going to increase or decrease our property value. And have there been any studies that document that there is a need for one-bedroom, single homes in our town? You know, are they, is there a demand? Is there an actual documented case study? So that's what I just wanted to state, and I hope that you guys will consider what it's like to be a family that's right across from a potential apartment complex coming in. Because we would like to continue living there for the rest of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the room wishes to speak on this subject?
Mr. Chairman, I do, but if it's out of place, that's okay.
Go ahead.
And I'm going to speak to the Planning Commission. And I want to tell you, we've been here several times on zoning. And this is where I'm at on zoning. It was put into place for the residents of Smith County to protect people who have homes or something that don't want something unwanted coming in. And I think when you hear concerns like I've heard tonight, then I can imagine how it is if I live there. So I don't know that I agree with a whole lot of special permits, because, and I do vote for some, because some is better, but as a person, I don't know that zoning works if we let some people down who has a house and kids there. So I just want you to know how I feel about it. I think that's a major concern anytime I hear a special use permit. You know, if everybody in the neighborhood's good for it, then I'm all good. You know, nobody, no fouls, no harms, no nothing. But if you go back a while back, I sit here in my own district, right over there next to Rita's when something was going on, and there was enemies made out of it. But bottom line is, zoning is put there for a reason. So I think where it is, it ought to protect people. And that's just my input. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Chairman. Go ahead.
I received one phone call from an adjacent landowner and asked if I would speak for them tonight. They wouldn't come in. Their concerns was traffic, like the other people are talking about, and the noise and clientele that's possible to be there. And college students do party, is what they said. And that's their opinion, and I was asked to give that for them, and I did so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm here.
Go right ahead.
I just want to state that I have actually lived in the duplex that Mr. Peak owns over on Chilhaway Street, and he keeps his property up very well. It's not junked up. It's certainly not low-income apartments or anything like that. This, I understand Mr. Stevenson's point and the residence. This is certainly something I'm going to have to contemplate, because I understand Mr. Peak's intentions. And I think there is a need for the apartments because of the school. And I think the one thing that we need to consider is the students that this is for is not your young, party class. These are graduate, professional students. So if that's his target audience, I think we need to take that into consideration. But I appreciate the neighbor sharing their point of view, because we need to certainly look at both sides. So I just wanted to put that there.
All right. Any other comments? Go.
Mr. Peak, can you come back up? I had a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
How many, we don't know how many units you're talking about. Can you explain to us? You said two units, but how many?
Could I show you a plat?
That would be nice.
This is the plat. This is Walton Road. I was going to start with this side and get it completed and get students. It does not necessarily have to be a student, but it does have to be somebody that can pay the rent and that I want. That's four on this side. And here's the, uh, the layout. We're gonna have garage in each unit. So the cars won't be parked, uh, outside. Of course, I'll also have a place that they can park, like right here, garage and a parking place. This is all gonna be paved. We're gonna have a thirty-foot entrance.
That was another two.
Two foot radius.
So one, one, one entrance in and out for both, both buildings?
Yes.
And that's approved by VDOC? That's what you said earlier?
And, and I'll be honest, I'll, I'm hard of hearing and I didn't hear what everybody said.
Is the, um, is the four units per building, is that hard and, hard and fast? I mean, does it have to be that many units?
It does not have to be. I can reduce it.
Thank you.
It's fine.
Share with the board supervisors. I think that's all right with you?
Yes.
If part of the special use permit was to, to allow duplexes, would, would you be agreeable to that versus the four per unit, like have two, two individual structures duplexes?
Uh, I'm open for any suggestion. I do want to develop the property.
You're welcome. Sit down. I'll, I'll bring you the, I'll bring you the plat. Does anybody else have any questions?
Can I speak? Um, I, I didn't go home soon.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Well, I'll bring you your plats in a minute.
Thank you.
My name's Dustin Stamper. I live at one oh four Elm Street. Um, I didn't come prepared to say anything. I didn't get a letter like everybody else did. But I live around the corner there in that subdivision. It is a wonderful subdivision. I recently moved there three to four years ago. I have four small children between the ages of seven and thirteen. But they play outside with every kid in that neighborhood. That we counted before we came in here, there was fourteen kids in that neighborhood that ride their bikes every day, ride their hoverboards. They play together. They run through each other's yards. It is a wonderful, private, well, not private, open, nice neighborhood, quiet. We all get along with each other. We all have cookouts with each other. His parents who live at the top of the hill are actually watching my little girl so I can be here tonight. So we all know each other very, very well. And I think the biggest concern we have is the traffic here. And that hill that you're, or the area that you're looking at developing or whatever, that is a blindside hill right there. If any of you have the time, please drive by and look at that because it is a very, very dangerous hill. I mean, it could take out any kid at any moment. Um, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other comments? You may have, have anything to say?
I do have a question for Clay.
Go right ahead.
It was residential, right?
Correct.
So if he wanted to build a house on it, he could build one house, right?
He, he could build, well, that's where it gets weird. If you paid attention to the number of tax number, numbers I read out, he owns a dozen tracts. Um, he could in theory split those up without looking at it into two tracts, maybe three tracts. If he could get the lot width requirements and build one or two homes, um, without jumping through any hoops.
So, and I'm a little slow. So he's got enough land. If he's got the boundary and the offset stuff to build two houses, what's he doing?
That would be my guess. How many, how many tracts? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I'm betting those are twenty-five foot strips, eight tracks. So yeah, I bet he has, he could.
He has enough to get two.
He could get two homes built.
So what he's wanting to do is put in eight apartment complex.
Yes.
Four residents on each side, eight, eight places. All right. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, eight total units.
If he wanted to build a house, he wouldn't even need to be.
Correct.
Which is residential. So he's wanting to build an apartment. All right, thank you.
All right.
Any further questions? This is your chance to make your comments or ask questions. Hearing done, I'll close this.
I have a quick question, if it's okay. Um, Mr. Peak.
Yes.
Um, has VDOC approved that entrance? As the only entrance?
Actually, they haven't approved, they have approved the entrance. But I have an option to swing around to where the cars would go out, not facing your road or your house rather, but come out over here on this way. That would be one option.
Closer to, uh,
Eddie's.
Mr. Morris's.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Um, will there be a street light?
I never thought of that. I don't know if it's a requirement. Uh, I never gave that a thought.
Okay. There was a comment made and so I just didn't know if that's something that VDOC, um, or something that would be required. And so those are my concerns, but there, there's a lot unknown about what exactly is gonna take place, what, what's gonna be over there?
You asked her to come up for it.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I, I, I think I heard everything she said. I do have a question for her. Would you mind coming to the mic? And I asked a lot of questions, but I'm here.
That's okay.
I'm here to try to do the right thing. So if you had another, I wanna ask you and I don't wanna get into a lot, but you know, you're here for a reason and I wanna make it count for you. So, and I'm not against Mr. Peak either.
Right, right.
I'm here to do the right thing, what I think the right thing is. So my question to you is, I'm sorry, if there was another entrance and there were street lights, do you feel better about this or do you not just want the apartments? I mean, I hear, I heard everybody say that traffic wasn't concerned.
It's kinda a loaded question because.
No, it's not loaded. It's very simple.
Well, I mean, is it, is it gonna be two entrances? Because if, if there's two entrances, that's gonna increase traffic further down in our neighborhood.
What if it was only one and then did it go to your residence?
I still think it, it, it's gonna increase traffic. You know, and I think that's the biggest issue there. Um, I think that would, it, the only thing that would help with is not shining lights into our house because I mean literally that entrance is right in front of our living room. So, you know.
I get it. And I, and I don't wanna just ask them. So everybody sitting out in front of me, here's the concerns. I wanna know what all your concerns are.
Yes, sir.
So your concerns are, are the traffic and the lights?
Traffic, lights, and then traffic because of the safety of the kids.
And the lights. Not necessarily the people gonna live in the apartment.
No, I, I'm, you know, I, hopefully the people will be the college students. I do worry about like the turnover rate, you know? Um, how often is someone new gonna be there? Um, you can't build rapport with people that are in and out. Um, so it wouldn't, you know, there wouldn't be that neighborhood vibe with the people that live there. Um, you know, I, I don't know what their social.
I get, I, I, I understand.
I, I don't know about all that.
But the fact is, if he builds two houses, your traffic's going up anyway.
Yes.
He's gonna develop a property. I can tell you that right now. He's a developer. He, he's not gonna let it sit there and I don't blame him. So if you get two houses and you get a man and a wife, and I'm just throwing this out here for everybody to think. I got my own opinion.
I would much rather be two houses with possible families.
A man and a wife and a couple of teenagers, your traffic went up anyway.
Yeah, but two, two to four cars versus sixteen or eight.
I get, I understand. I just, I wanna know how you felt about it if it was in the entrance somewhere. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess I have a question too. Not nobody, sure, come up with this.
I have a question too, sort of the same thing. If he builds a house, puts three or four bedrooms in it, you know, there's a lot of kids go to college. They all get together and rent one big house. Is anything in our laws keep that from occurring?
That's a good question. I'm glad you asked.
Uh, so you know, I just, I just wanna throw it out there. I haven't, I don't know the answer to it, but.
Thing about that is it stays rural residential.
Right.
That's the difference. That's what's gonna affect them.
Okay. Anybody else have any more questions? Anything you want to get answered? Now's the time to ask them.
Well, I have a question, Charlie. Um, I, I'm, I'm familiar with the area and aren't there apartments already on that Walton Road there on the town hill?
The corner, the corner off, right off Chana Mill, right off the, at the end.
But the entrance to it is off of Walton Road, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's, that's what, that's, I mean, that's just what I was. It's not really in the neighborhood.
Yeah, it doesn't actually come down into the neighborhood.
What would Gerald's thoughts be about the, the duplex? If, if we were to put a special use permit, reduce it to a duplex only, you're, you're reducing the numbers in half. So you're going from eight potential, eight times two vehicles, sixteen vehicles. You'd be going to four duplexes, maximum of eight vehicles. What would your thoughts be on that? The duplexes allowing Mr. Peak the opportunity to rent to the Emory and Henry students? I, I personally don't think the partying happens if he rents to the, cut, the Emory students because those kids are paying two to three hundred thousand dollars. They're there to get a, they, you know, that education is serious. I've dealt with several of them over the years and tried to talk to them. I mean, they're, they're constantly studying, exercising. I mean, they, they, it's not, it's a lot different than a normal college, four-year degree, I guess you'd say. Um, what would your thoughts be on the duplexes if he had to? And, and you might also wanna ask him to see the, the plats because they look pretty nice. How would you all feel about that if it was limited to?
Well, cutting back the amount of people, the amount of traffic, that's a great thing. Well, however you do it, that's, I think that's a great thing. But I, I've known Mr. Peak, we, I grew up in that neighborhood. Um, I've known him for a long time, grew up in the same church. Um, and you know, it's, I'm not opposed to somebody making, uh, you know, a business investment and making money. But to build two houses, like the gentleman said, uh, it would keep it, the whole thing residential. Um, houses, you know, it, it's a great property. Two houses would fit great. Um, again, it keeps everything residential. Um, and what happens if we do this and we get a special permit? And then somebody else wants to put an apartment complex up on top of the hill or somewhere else? Um, you know, it's just gonna start, it could start a snowball. I like to keep everything residential, uh, zone residential and, and houses for, you know, for our kids' safety, uh, the number of traffic and for, um, your, your house, uh, the, the value. Um, you know, I'd just like to keep it like it has been for fifty years. A nice, quiet neighborhood with, with houses, not businesses.
Can I speak as well? Recently, we had some, some neighbors leave our neighborhood that was forty years of age, around my age, um, who stayed up and partied all night long. I live right across the street from them. They were playing cornhole till two and three o'clock in the morning. If this GD that, I heard that, my kids heard that, all night long. And I think we are kinda worried about the partying. We're not as worried about residential if two houses or one house came in because we're hoping that they would be nice families like the rest of the people in this neighborhood. No, I don't think that the Emory and Henry kids are gonna come in and be partying, but there is a lot of people coming and going, as Ms. Brooks said. So we don't know. We're gonna be going through the same rotation every two to three years. So, so maybe party, some may not. And we are in accounting. And to the best of my knowledge, there is not a noise ordinance in the county, correct?
Not one that's enforceable.
Exactly. So when these people started throwing down across the street from us not too long ago, there wasn't a thing we could do about it. But just sat there and hoped that maybe they moved away and thank God they did. So that's one thing we are worried about as well, not just the traffic. Yes, that is the major concern. But the noise too. We want families in this neighborhood. I mean, like I said, we all know each other. We have cookouts together. It's, it's a wonderful neighborhood and we hope we can continue that. But with the turnover, we, we don't know what we're getting.
I, I, I wanna echo a quick concern is what we're here for.
Thank you, sir.
You, you know, you can stand there.
Okay.
And, and, and nothing against Mr. Peel, just calling my opinion and nothing against the Emory students, East Tennessee State student, inch student. I throw down and get loose every now and then and young kids are gonna do it. I don't give a, what college you go to. So it's a, it's a concern.
You're right.
You know, two or three hundred thousand dollars, parents has invested debt and some kids went out and blew it. So I understand your concern. You know, I don't think one college makes us better than another. Young people are young people. Old people are old people. People who say they don't barbecue, kick down and, and I'm sure those people here don't drink, but those people do. And, and I understand your concerns. So I appreciate you all here tonight and I feel for you. Zoning ought to be for the people that lives there, but I'm only gonna vote.
Thank you.
What's speed limit on that road?
Uh, I think it's twenty-five, right?
It's twenty-five.
Would it have to reduce the speed limit and maybe put speed bumps? And those college students come in, I, I have nothing against them either, or Mr. Peak.
Right.
Nothing that all up businesses. But like, like you say, you get a turnover of students coming in, they're not familiar with the road.
Right.
They're not familiar with the children on the curve coming in. They come in a little fast. They don't, the new ones don't know they're there.
Yes.
It, it only takes one time.
You're exactly right. And if we face that issue.
You know, if the speed limit or the speed bumps or reroute the road like you're suggesting or something, anything that would help. Is there anything that would help?
I don't, I don't know personally. I mean, without looking at everything, everybody here knows more, a little bit more about it than I do, but the road, if you're talking about moving the driveway down, like I said, I live around the corner, so I'm not sure if he's moving it towards me. There's seven kids on my side and like I said, and then Brooke and Vern, I mean, uh, Brooke and Brian, they live right there in front of it. There's four kids there. Another three, four, to every other house has got kids all the way down through there. And the hill itself, like I said, I encourage every single one of you all to please drive over that hill because you cannot see anything once you get to the top of it. Thank you all.
All righty. Having said that, anything else? Anybody else wanna like to comment? Now's your chance. Hearing done, as I started to do fifteen minutes ago, I'll close this public hearing for the board supervisor.
We'll close the planning commission portion of this.
All right. We'll stay, take a recess ten, fifteen minutes while they.
I'll reconvene the planning commission meeting to deliberate at two cases. We'll, we'll start with, um, the salt bowl, the nine oh two Allison Gap Road.